Please bring this meeting to order at seven oh two. So please rise for the pleasure of the meetings.
Recording in progress.
This meeting is being recorded, audio and video. Anybody else recording, audio and video? Okay, anyways, all right, roll call please.
Mr. Albert?
Here.
Mr. Case?
Here.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Here.
Charlotte Crane?
Here.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Here.
Dr. Everwine?
Here.
Mr. Emerson?
Here.
Mr. Ferella?
Here.
Dr. Jelinas?
Here.
Mr. Lauta Top?
Ms. Ladizori?
Here.
Ms. Lounsbury? Mr. Stewart?
Here.
Mrs. Tucker? Mr. Peters?
Here. We have a call. All right, any response from the audience? The only audience we have is two, so I think we're good there, so student affairs.
Hi, everyone. I would just like to say winter sports have started getting into their games and meets, and the girls' basketball team had a game against Uzic last night. We did lose, but we played really good, so just want to throw that out there. There was a winter concert last night at Wakona, and it went pretty good from what I heard. I couldn't be there because my game's live. And NHS had our empty bowls event last Thursday. It went pretty good, and we raised close to three thousand dollars.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is financial reporting, the warrants.
Okay, so we have a list of warrants here that have been previously approved. Next is...
Gifted gifts and donations, approval to establish a new student activity accounts.
Be it resolved, Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approved a new student activity account at Nessicus Regional Middle School for the class of 2030, and Nessicus Gender Sexuality Alliance as recommended by the district treasurer.
Second. Motion and second, any questions? What is the, what is the Gender Sexuality Alliance, what do they do?
So there, there's a longstanding group in high school, and now they also have a group at the middle school, so this is just a group really that provides a safe space for students who don't, who identify, you know, to have a space where they can talk about gender identity, and they, they do some activities in the school, they do some fundraising around awareness, and that's nearly it. I mean, it's a, it's a very informal group. I would say they consider it to be a safe space for them to gather and to have a teacher leader, and on occasion, when it's needed, maybe a school adjustment counselor, and it's really, we want to support them because we want to make sure that they feel like, they feel supported, and that they have the, they have the resources that they need. And like I said, this, this group has been a longstanding group at the high school, so it's really a continuation of that work, but bringing it down to the middle school level.
I think they were there last year at the middle school.
They were there last year. We're just recognizing them so that what we can do is provide stipends for the teacher leaders.
We also think it's part of a national group because I think we have that in New York, so.
Anything else? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Mr. La, um, Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Ms. Lounsbury? Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is approval of fundraising events for student activities.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the following fundraising events: Selling positive grams from January 31st to February 6th, 2024, to raise funds for the Nessicus Regional Middle School Gender Sexuality Alliance Club; Nessicus Regional Middle School Semi-Formal Dance on February 9th, 2024, to raise funds for the Nessicus Regional Middle School Gender Sexual Sexuality Alliance Group, Club, excuse me; Wakona Regional High School Schoolwide Dance in late January, early February, to raise funds for the class of 2026; Spring Craft Fair, date to be determined, to raise funds for the Wakona Regional High School Student Council.
Second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any questions on any of these?
Yeah. What, what are positive grams?
Um, positive grams, that's, that's Valentine's Day, just...
Oh, okay.
Also, that's like grandma's.
I thought I might have to get over there.
Any other questions? See, you know, here, uh, roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is acceptance of donation from Berkshire Ticonic.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following donations from the Berkshire Ticonic Grant as recommended by the district treasurer: Six thousand one hundred dollars for first things first; two thousand four hundred and seventy-five dollars for technology across the curriculum for preschoolers.
Second, motion and second, any questions on this one?
Yes.
Any?
What is first things first? I assume it's a good thing because it's first, but...
So actually, both these grants are through, they're, um, through our CFC coordinator, Wendy Proventure, so it's for preschool and for early childhood.
Excellent, thank you.
Any others? All right, roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is acceptance of donation for Berkshire Ticonic Steve Grant.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following donations from the Berkshire Ticonic Steve Grant as recommended by the district treasurer: One thousand dollars awarded to Nessicus Regional Middle School Television Production Project; one thousand dollars awarded to Wakona Regional High School Plants and Pollinator Plax; one thousand dollars awarded to Wakona Regional High School Culturally Responsive Diverse Library Materials; one thousand dollars awarded to Born to Learn Literacy Kits; one thousand six hundred dollars awarded to Wakona Regional High School for Shakespeare and Company Midsummer Night Dream.
Second, okay, motion and second, any questions on any of this one?
Yeah. Is the Nessicus Television Production Project for the kids to use the televisions?
So, so, um...
Have a studio.
So it's a, it's, it's really, they run a morning television show, and it's led by Mr. Lennon, and they do a fabulous job, and they love doing it, and they're on screen, and it's a, it's been a collaborative project between the students and Mr. Lennon for quite some time.
It's probably updating their equipment.
Right, exactly.
Any other questions? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Next up is acceptance of donation from Aaron's Appliance.
Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts a donation of five hundred dollars from Aaron's Appliance to be awarded to Wakona's Renaissance Student Activity Fund as by district treasurer.
Second, motion and second, any questions on this one?
Is the Renaissance Student Activity Association associated with the Shakespeare Company Show? No.
No, so Renaissance really honors students of high academic achievement, and I will say, there are so many students that receive those honors and awards because it's really across the board, and they have a Renaissance evening at the end of the year, so as freshmen they can receive academic achievement awards as sophomores, juniors, seniors, and it's an event that is well attended by families and just honors student accomplishments under, in academics.
Any other question? Roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Last one, authorization for the scholarship program.
We have resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accepts the following donations totaling two thousand dollars as recommended by the district treasurer: Brian Fitzgerald and Julie Englund donated two thousand dollars to the class of 1970 Scholarship Fund.
Any questions on this one?
Sorry? I'll second that.
Oh, you seconded, sorry. You forgot about that piece, I didn't have it. Okay, it's been seconded, now any questions on that? None, okay, roll call vote please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. Thank you, bud. Moving on to the secretary's report, approval of minutes for the regular meeting in November sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, can I get a motion?
Second.
Second, okay, you got a motion and a second? Any questions? Yeah?
I, um, I had sent some, uh, some, some last minute edits into, to back, but didn't make it into a minute, so...
You want to make a motion as...
Make a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay. All right, can I get a second on that motion to the amended minutes?
Second.
All right, any questions on that? All right, uh, roll call vote, to approve the minutes as amended.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Crepe Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Ms. Di Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Mr. Dr. Jelinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries. All right, moving on, superintendent's report, recommendations.
Okay, so I don't have a lot this evening, just a couple of things that I wanted to just to expand on in my, that I put in my report. One of the things that we do that we feel very grateful for is we provide food insecurity for families as supplemental nutrition, and this year, as I put in my, in my report, we're up to a hundred families, so that's the highest we've been, so just, just to know that that's something that, that we do provide, that's, that's high for, for Central Berkshire. So that's just one thing I wanted everybody to be aware of. We, I had the, the privilege and opportunity to observe Wakona's No Place for Hate group facilitate their faculty meeting, and it was great to watch students really take leadership around No Place for Hate. They did, they did some education around the isms, the cultural isms, which was very powerful, they did some personal sharing around their own experiences, and they, they shared things, ways that they felt like could be improved, they gave teachers advice on what they felt like they were doing well in, in areas that they could improve, and teachers were, everybody was, was very open to their, to their suggestions, to their feedback. They were very well received, and then, and they also arranged for us to get into collaborative groups and report out, which, it was, it was just beautifully facilitated, they led with poise and grace, and I was really proud of them, and I guess I can't say enough how, you know, the power of those peer-led groups around topics that they feel are really important to them, and clearly, this group feels very strongly about, about anti-bias education around fully understanding the isms and their own capacity to lead, and the group, I, I still remember when I said that to, to them, that I remember when the group was very small and started very small and has really grown, so just the visual, you could see, I, I can't think, I don't remember numbers exactly, but I would say at least, I, I don't know, but it was, it's grown exponentially since they started, so...
There were at least twenty students presenting to us.
There were at least twenty students in front of us, and those are just the ones that were presenting, so just some, just something to know, and that group is also working very closely with the, or they're starting to collaborate with Nessicus's group, uh, group, which is Making a World of Difference, and also sort of sharing their, sharing their leadership capacity and really working with them closely around how they've grown and some of the work that they've done, so this is something that's happening in the district that I think we're, we're very proud of. And we had a family literacy engagement evening, we had it at Craneville School, we also had it at Nessicus. I will say, for some reason, I had a lot of, I had a lot of little ones that I was reading to, and it was one of the highlights of my month, I have to say. They, I had a vision that I was going to be checking them in, and I was going to be giving them certificates, and I was, I'd read Knuckle Bunny so many times, and it was so appreciated, and I don't, I, the little, the faces that were excited that I was reading Knuckle Bunny really made my night, my month, et cetera. I, I do want to give a shout out too for Nessicus, where Kelly Furlong, the vice principal of teaching and learning, organized multiple activities and really went all out to ensure that middle school families were attending this literacy engagement evening, and it was, it was a hopping place, which I would, I would say probably, in the years that I've been at Central Berkshire, I have never seen Nessicus Middle School so well attended by families, and it was one of those, you know, darkish, coldish evenings when you don't really necessarily want to leave the house. She had an author, she had literacy bingo, she had crafts related to books, she had organized, what she had organized was not only accessible for just middle school students, but if they had siblings and they couldn't choose, they, they were also equally engaged. So, so the, the feedback that I got was, of course, don't have them both on the same night, so that's, that's, we're already there. I have to give Mike a lot of credit for really putting the orders through, because one of the things that we decided is, one of the best ways that we can encourage our students and families to promote reading and literacy is to make sure that everybody has access to high-quality, age-appropriate reading material that is, you know, that really spans, spans different genres, spans interest levels, windows and mirrors, and I feel like we're moving in a really positive direction, there's always more we can do, but it's a good journey to be on, so...
We did, we had over a hundred families come to our summer event, and between the middle school and the elementary school, there were about, there were ninety-eight families at the winter event, which is, so it's...
And we're, we're trying to time it so that there's reading material for students prior to, or either just prior to or during the summer break, and this one was timed, so there was reading material during probably the longest, just prior to the holiday break, which is probably the longest break during the school year, so that, that was really what was behind the timing of it. We did receive, this was a grant, correct?
It's a partnership.
So we, we have, I'm going to ask Mike to describe this because this is something that I think is, is a nice opportunity for Central Berkshire.
DESI offered high dosage, they're calling it high dosage math tutoring programming, specifically to fourth and eighth grade, and districts were invited to apply, so I did apply, and we were partnered with a company called Imagine Learning to, and we landed twelve spots for our eighth grade and twelve spots for our fourth grade across the district, and it is small group targeted instruction, so we use our own internal benchmark data that would be used to develop intervention groups anyway, but the interventions are provided by certified teachers in, virtually, but every group of four students that we choose based on their, the standards that they need to work on, meet with a certified teacher either three times a week for thirty minutes, a time, or twice a week for forty-five minutes for a twelve-week period, which is going to start in January and go right up to MCAS, and we've identified the standards most needing to be targeted in both eighth grade and fourth grade, and we'll have groups from all four elementary, all three elementary schools, and we're coordinating the timing of that, and we'll have a group of twelve, we'll have three, three teachers assigned to them at the middle school, and they'll be working in their current intervention block, but it'll allow us to get twelve more students in that intervention block, and we're excited about it, and that'll, we're putting it together quickly, we learned about it on Monday, or last week, we had a meeting on Monday, and we're rolling January eighth, so we're excited.
So how many kids altogether?
Twenty, it's twenty-four total, where the, that's something we were granted.
Between the two grades?
Yep.
And is it a one-year grant?
It's a, it only, it's a one-year grant, but the period, it's a twelve-week intensive tutoring program.
Thank you.
I have a question, why those two grades?
They were targeted by DESI as needing the most statewide, the most work in math, the gaps were the largest, and it, like, the eighth grade for us was definitely a target area based on our MCAS analysis, so we, we wanted something there anyway, and when they offered this opportunity, we thought it was a perfect match.
So, second question, is, is twelve enough? Twelve is, are we, do we still need some more?
No, I mean, no, twelve is not enough, but...
It's more of a pilot, though. Like, right now, we're gonna, we're piloting it, and the way DESI often does things is they'll start out and something's free, and it's a pilot, and then you have an opportunity to purchase if it works well, and, and actually, it could be something that we end up deciding to invest in, so we're piloting it this year, but no, it, it wouldn't be enough, but we also want to see what the quality is and how the students respond to it before we would consider investing more into it.
The districts get, had larger numbers, had larger gaps in their scores and larger student populations.
Any other questions? Yeah, do you?
Not, not on this particular, but...
Go ahead.
Okay. Parents, and I don't know how broad it's spread, but parents got a letter from Howie regarding the national testing that's optional for students, can you talk about that?
Yeah, so the National Education Association, NAEP, they periodically, they will pick districts and schools for sample testing, so this year, Kittredge will be participating and Nessicus will be participating. This isn't unusual, in the past, I think Pittsfield participates every year, I don't know about, I'm not really sure about other districts, but this really contributes to a pool of data wi, a data-wide, or a national database on how the, our country is doing in terms of literacy numeracy, and I don't think it's science, I think it's just literacy numeracy, and so this is the first year we've been chosen to participate, but we have neighbors that, that have been, so what I don't know, and I can find out, and maybe you know, because I don't know, do you say we participated?
Yeah, we did every year.
Do parents get individual reports?
I, I don't think so, it all gets, it's...
It's more pool data, right?
Yeah, when you hear in the media, like, national statistics around reading and math scores, this is the standard that they're using generally to measure it, and it's a, they sample, it's a, it's a random sampling, and so different schools are chosen throughout the country, and they mix a certain number of rural schools, suburban schools, urban, and try to get as many students to take the test as they can.
Right, and the letter says it's probably about a hundred and twenty minutes, and optional, and this will be, I think, February, beginning of February, I think, soon.
It's very similar to one, one section of an MCAS test.
Thank you.
The only other thing I just wanted to report out is that, you know, we're always looking at our systems and structures, we're always trying to make things more efficient. We did take a look at some of our forms, we, we deal a lot with forms, you know, things like building new forms and bullying forms online and registration forms, they're all really important, and they'd all, it does take up, and as it should, but it takes up a fair amount of time and communication between individuals and our administrative offices, so we have started to digitize those forms, and, and it's, it's not just a digital form, it's also, it's a form that actually kind of works for you, so the first one we've started with is our bullying form, students, the way it would work, and, and again, that, I, I do want to give credit to Joe Sturgis, I know he's here somewhere, he's behind there, and...
And you're behind the screen.
Yeah, and, and Mike, because there is a fair amount of intensive coding to make this all work, because what happens is, as soon as someone actually starts filling out this form, and it will be linked to our website, but it'll also be easily accessible by our administrators, so families, parents, anybody can actually complete a form, then we automatically get an email that a, a form has been started, and it goes through various steps, it includes the safe plan, it will include, uh, invest, it, it will include the investigation notes, it will include a lot of important information, and it's filtered through, it's, it's filtered to central office, Mike and I see copies, and if we feel like it's important for the school adjustment counselor to share, to see that information, they will receive that information too, so, so that's something that, that's in the works for us through a new program that we have called Droplet, so that's just another piece of information, that's something behind the scenes that we're working on, that I think some of those forms will go live for us probably at the start of the new year. So I don't have anything else, and unless anyone has a question for me.
Savannah? Thank you. Moving on, okay, implications, so first of all, the agenda there is a school committee may take that vacancy, Dalton, which you saw is not happening, and I have to apologize, the names for the candidates were not included in the, in the agenda, the abbreviated agenda goes out to the, to the town, it was included in our packet, but not the one that went out to the town, so it was actually a good catch, and I think it's important because if the names aren't there, if people wanted to speak for those, those candidates, they wouldn't know they were on the slate, so it's, it's obviously a big catch, so we're going to postpone it to, in one of the meetings in January. Also gives us a chance to get the voting right, which, you know, there's some concerns about that, so we can get back into that and make sure we're, we're doing it the way we want to do it and the way that's fair, so both of those things, we, we have some time to get, to get right, I think that'd be much better, so anyways, pause asks for the Confucian?
I'm going to add some tea balance, I won't be here, but can I vote?
I don't know.
Depends on the process.
Could you look into that while you're standing? Like I said, I won't be at the January eleventh meeting either, so...
Right, so maybe we, I mean, I, maybe we can talk about this and move it to the January twenty-fifth meeting, instead of, it's not imperative that it's the next meeting, so maybe we'll move it to the January twenty-fifth meeting and, you know, for more participation. So, pauses for that. The other thing on my agenda is I, I sent out the subcommittee assignments, and last year, I was able, everybody got their first and second choice, which is really great, this year, things got shuffled around, people had different priorities, and I always look at those as your first, second priorities, and so I couldn't give everybody first and seconds, and we had a couple chairs changed, and I spoke with the, the past chairs and new chairs, looking to switch things up, so Chair of Policy is not going to be Sharps, she's going to be the Chair of Policy, and Paul Ferella's going to be the Chair of Finance, everybody else is going to stay the same, and then take a look at those assignments, if you guys have harder than any of them, just let me know, but I, I think, you know, everybody, you're on, wants something that was on your list, so it should be that way, but not first and second for sure, but, and one thing I, I missed, and Dick caught, sent a note to me, he actually, he was sorry that the, that the superintendent, superintendent review ad hoc... He actually, he was sorry that the, that the superintendent, Superintendent Review Ad hoc Committee, he said, oh, I thought we were gonna keep that. And we are keeping that. It was my mistake not including it because I was editing last year's and didn't include that. So that ad hoc committee, we, we decided last meeting, we're gonna continue that this year. And then after we're done with this year, and you guys go through the whole process of the review of superintendent, next year when we do subcommittees, we'll either keep that as a standing subcommittee, you know, make a change to that, or roll it into personnel and maybe make a negotiation subcommittee instead of, you know, you know, having it through in there. So anyways, that's, that's it for the subcommittee pieces. Any, any questions on any of that? So that's pretty much all I have. Again, I apologize for the confusion and the delays, but I did call the candidates and spoke to them about what happened. They were, they were all fine about it, so it's no big deal. So.
Rich?
Oh yeah. Yep, gotcha.
As far as the candidates, I mean, it is unfortunate that we can't vote on them tonight. And I, I do think it's kind of a blessing in disguise that they're not here and that we can't actually vote on it tonight and get this voting method right. I do wanna say I, I do have concerns about the, the method that was presented to us with the nominations. I, I think there's, there are significant issues with that regarding fairness. And I know that it's transparent and that's what our legal counsel has recommended. But, but I think we should keep looking into that and see if there's a way we can vote by ballot. I'm looking into this myself. I did speak to somebody in the Elections Division at the Secretary of State's office, who coincidentally, he actually lost a seat by the same method. And so he said, trust me, I know how unfair this is.
Wait, Dave, let me stop you right there. I think our legal counsel was wrong and he dug into it a little bit deeper. And I think you're right, that it's open to whatever way we want to. And there isn't anything in the law that talks about this vacancy piece. So I'm guessing that he was maybe speaking off the cuff, that's my guess. But, you know, either way, we go back to him again and push back. So we're gonna have, I think, a much better review of how we can do this for the next, for when we go forward.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you for following up on that.
Yeah, no, no problem. I mean, the delay gives us time to get it.
Well, I, yeah, I mean, it's fortunate, unfortunate.
Yes, exactly. I'm not, I'm not a lawyer. I pretend to be one.
I don't play one on TV.
Exactly, yes.
Since we're probably not gonna have the vote until January 25th, would it be advisable to discuss or present how the vote is gonna happen on the 11th of January? So if anybody has any questions or wants to make any tweaks, they could do that at that point, I suppose.
I think it's gonna, yeah, put it on the agenda. It's just, we'll have it set by then. And then we can just present it and people can decide whether or not to.
Somebody may wanna make a amendment to.
No, good idea.
Thank you.
Okay. The only thing is we have an acceptance of a solar PPA Estoppel certificate. Do you want me to motion and then?
Sure, sure. May it resolve that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee accept the solar PPA Estoppel certificate as drafted and authorized, I'm assuming it's supposed to be by the chair, to sign and certificate. Sign said certificate?
Yes.
Yes.
Second. Can you give a second?
Second.
Okay, he's got a motion and second. Questions?
What is that? That is the question.
So last week, Sun Farm Development reached out to us. They oversee Churchill Ventures, who we have an agreement with for our solar panels. All this is doing is they're selling some of their membership interests in that company. And they just need to have an agreement to say that we are in good standing with our current agreement. So this is really just saying, we, we, we're standing by our agreement that's already been set back in 2017. And we did have the attorneys look at this to make sure it was, everything looked good. He said all we need to do is a vote in the school committee.
So, so Greg, this isn't, we don't own these panels.
No, they don't.
We're contracted to buy the electricity produced up to a certain percentage at a certain rate.
Right, so we get a 17.5 discounted rate for, in the current contracts for 20 years, which was signed, I believe, in 2017.
And how does that compare to market rate?
Seventy percent.
Seventeen, yeah.
Oh, okay.
We get the 17.5 off the market.
Off the market rate.
You want, you wanna get that intervention class?
No, I'm fine.
Sorry, it was up there.
We're on salary.
Yeah, so the PPA stands for Power Purchase Agreement. So it's, it's pretty popular around. If you don't have the money to invest in your own solar panels, you can actually buy from these companies and profit by PPA. I asked the question if, you know, are we redoing it and extending it another 20 years? But we're basically, it's not just a change of names for the most part, so. Any other questions about that? All right, can I get a roll call please?
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlie Crane?
Yep.
Mr. Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Julinas?
Yes.
Ms. Ladizori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes. Motion carries. That's it for me. I'll move on to the Subcommittee Reports. First up is Curriculum.
Good evening, everybody. Curriculum Subcommittee met on November 28th. We had a pretty full agenda. Our first agenda item was a presentation by Dr. Allison Druin, Dr. Ben Benderson, and Pepper Fornier, the new JS Bryant School that is trying to open in our district. They were supposed to present here tonight, but they have some more work they need to do in order to bring it to this full school committee. So that will come in February, I believe.
Yeah, either end of February or early March.
Okay. But just to give you a little background, the Bryant, JS Bryant School is going to be a private school for LGT, LBGTQIA plus students who are also suffering from anxiety and depression. It's going to be a therapeutic high school for, starting out to 36 students. And hopefully they will expand eventually to 150 students with a residential option. This, well, they have purchased property in Covington where they plan to build. They are starting the accreditation process with DESI. What they need from us is similar to what branches needed, which is just our, the school committee's approval for them to exist within our district. They also will be taking, are accepting public school transfers. So if it's, if there is a public school student within an hour's radius of, of JS Bryant who is suffering from anxiety and depression, and it turns out that through discussions, placement in the school would be beneficial. And they are a part of the LGBTQIA plus community, we could possibly transfer the students out of our, our district to theirs for part of their, for their education. It'll be a four-year school. Students could complete their four-year high school education there if they would, if they choose to. Right now, they think that the tuition would be about $80,000 a year, some of which would be reimbursable by insurance due to the therapeutic nature of the school. But, and we did vote to recommend that, to the full school committee, that they be allowed to continue with their, with developing their plan with DESI and to exist within the school, in, within the school district. But they will come and present further to the rest of, to all of us at the end of February, early March. Does anybody have any questions on that? I think it's a little early and you'll get more of a view of what the school's all about when they actually come to present.
I have a, I'm trying to figure out how to formulate this question. So we're just, we would just be voting to allow them to?
Yes.
Be within our district?
Yes. So anytime a, a private school wants to form, we did this too with the Branches School for Autistic Children, they have to get approval from the district that they are moving into. And then once they get, if they get approval from that district, they also have to get approval from two or three other districts in the surrounding area because they could potentially be a placement for district students.
Right. So the, and then are there any, what's the right word, liabilities or?
No.
I guess how does it affect?
No, we bear no responsibility whatsoever.
It doesn't affect.
In what question?
Other than if they were to take students, would it affect funding or something?
That would only be IEP students.
Yes.
The kids, not.
I was trying to understand.
Right, so it would be, so it's, it's essentially a private school. So if families chose to send their children paid and pay tuition to JS Bryant School, they could do so freely and disenroll them from our district. If there happens to be, if there is a student who does suffer from anxiety and depression where it is found that our district can't provide a suitable learning environment for this student, and they also happen to be a member of the LGBTQIA plus community, this could be a possible placement for them. That is the, so we bear no responsibility whatsoever for what happens, what, on the grounds of that school. We just need to, we just say that we're okay with you being here sharing space.
I just have a question as relates to transportation for those students. Simply because member towns that have students who go to vocational school, say it's incurred at cost, how would the transportation, what is the liability to the towns for transport?
So if the, if the student is just a private school enrolling, the parents are completely 100% responsible for providing transportation.
Only if?
If, only if we make the trans, a transfer of a district student to them, are we then responsible for negotiating transportation to, for this, for the particular student to JS Bryant?
But it's a district responsibility, not by individual towns?
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And just a point of clarification, if a student reached the point of an outplacement and that was a viable option, that student would be going somewhere else anyway to school. And we would be looking for options, probably out of state at this point with what's open. So if, their existence within the district, within our, within the district doesn't really affect the outplacements of our students because they would be being outplaced for their, for their needs anyway.
This just provides a possible other option that may be closer to home.
I just thought once this gets, maybe then becomes more widely known, that may be a question that comes up.
But if, if the student is just there strictly as a private school student, we are not responsible for providing transportation. Thank you. Any other questions right now? Okay, so we will wait for them to come and present to us. We also had a presentation from our Special Services Director Nathan Liu on a special education review that the district is in the middle of. But the reason that they came, he came to Curriculum Subcommittee is that's part of the review process. The, so what we were told is Student Services is now housed as Nessus with a total of five departments, Special Education, 504, English Language Education, DCF, and Homeless. Two of these five programs are having DESI reviews within six weeks of each other. The reason for this occurring is that DESI missed us on the list for review during COVID. So they're making up for this now, lucky Mr. Liu for two in six weeks. The two programs under review are our English Language Education and our Special Education Program. The English Language Education Review took place on November 30th, which encompassed Zoom interviews with Mr. Liu, an English as a second language teacher, and an ESL teacher with an ESL student in the classroom. Uploading of lots of data with the levels, materials of instruction, and parent communication, documentation for the ESL students with disabilities who needed to be provided, and then parental surveys from DESI concerning the opinions of these parents for their students' education. We also had a special education review or tiered focus monitoring. It started in May and it encompassed a DESI review of what is called Group A, which are the more intensive students. A timeline, reviews for IEPs needed to be turned over during, for a specific time block. Department had to track all of the initial IEP meetings with focus on preschool referrals. IEP transition forms for those kids over the age of 14 also needed to be provided to show how they will be moving, moving on to college or career once they graduate. They also required a review of three student files, three students with autism, three with specified other disabilities, three ESL students, and three with behavioral issues. The, a review of the district accommodation plan, kindergarten screening and benchmarking. There will be an onsite visit from debt, three DESI staff members where they will pull and review 15 random files, look at timeout procedures. They would also, they would also be looking at quiet rooms within the district, but we don't have any. Interviews of staff and Superintendent Blake Davis will occur on January 12th. And Mr. Liu had a meeting with families on December 4th to discuss the full process. And we, Mr. Liu anticipates a full report back from DESI by July 1st, and then he will report back to Curriculum Subcommittee on the outcome. He did know, Mr. Liu did wanna note a couple of things that during his tenure as Student Services Director, there has been a slight increase in IEPs. They're not sure if this is due to COVID or if we just have a better review process for IEPs. But we have almost 20% of our student population in the district on an IEP. Then also, new state IEPs have been released for implementation, to be implemented on September 1st of 2024. The state has not redone their IEP since 2001. Did I, I think I got that correct? Yeah, so it's been quite a while. And then Dr. Barbara Craft Rees did a report out on the Curriculum Council. This was formed, the Curriculum Council was formed after discussion, or we talked about it in September's Curriculum Subcommittee Meeting, and it's part of a grant for high-quality curriculum updating. The council's meeting under the guidance of our Assistant Superintendent Michael Henall. It's made up of teachers, parents, and school committee members. The focus of the council right now is on finding a new K-8 reading curriculum, one that's exciting, easy to use, and meets the science of reading standards. Assistant Superintendent Henall introduced the group to ED reports and curate two sites that help review high-quality curriculums. The council is reviewing three different programs, Core Knowledge, Language Arts, Amplify, Great Minds, and Open Up Resources. The council is looking at each program through the lens of a high-quality curriculum and reviewing all materials. The next steps will be field testing and then piloting. And the council met, is meeting every other week in December and in February while taking January off. Our next, Barbara, do you have anything else to add about that?
I do.
Yeah.
Give it to me.
Sorry, Mr. Albert.
And I just wanted to say two things. First of all, I was very impressed with Mr. Liu, who's really on top of the situation. You know, that, and I have experience in special ed and man knows what he's talking about. And the other thing is I'm impressed with what the state is looking at. It may be a pain, but knowing how schools abuse their student populations, and I'm not saying that that's where we're at. The fact that the state has such a comprehensive exam of, of, a look at what's going on, it should happen. It should happen in every single school district because that really guarantees that there's children are getting what they need. And I was glad to hear it.
Yeah, just unfortunate that they missed doing it one, two years ago and now they got a bunch, but yeah.
Yeah, right. Like I said, it, it may be a pain to have that done, but it's a good thing that it's done.
Right. Our next meeting will be Tuesday, January 9th on Zoom at 7:00 PM. Leslie's gonna give us an update on the Curriculum Council and where they stand with a review of new materials. And then we will be going over from a curriculum perspective, the new self, state health and wellness standards. Presentation given by Carrie Mason. We will also be reviewing a overnight field trip request.
Thank you. Next up is Spines.
Okay, so we met on December 12th in person and we talked over, discussed a couple of topics. The first was, it was a pretty in-depth conversation about the 20. The first was, it was a pretty in-depth conversation about the 2024 rural aid. The district has 1.325 million, which is a large amount. We are a very geographically diverse district. So Central Berkshire receives the most rural aid. Some of the other districts have much less. And so one of the challenges with that is trying to use the money the way it's designed to be used within the timeframe. So for example, the aid comes into the district on October 30th and it has to be spent by June 30th of the following year. So in that situation, Director of Finance and Operations Greg Borel shared with us that while we do receive most of the rural aid, it can't be used to directly offset town assessments. And there was a lengthy discussion after that amongst the committee members about prioritizing uses of rural aid allocation. So that'll be a continuing conversation over the next couple of our meetings. The next thing, oh, any questions on that? Okay. The next thing that we talked about was the fiscal '25 initial budget. And again, Director of Operations Greg Borel shared with us that the budget that we are looking at has an amount of $32,511,842, which represents an increase of 7.29%. Keep in mind that in 2024, the preliminary budget reflected an increase of 5.86. So historically, we start with a high number and then move down from that. Some of the things that we'll be looking at is state revenue, school choice funds, and solidifying the insurance increases that the district has to incur. The next, anything on that? Then we talked about the school resource officer. This was a very brief conversation simply because the grant to support that position was not approved, nor is it the cost of that included in the budget. So there will be no action taken at this point. Then our next topic was school lunch prices. So the last time it was changed was 2000?
That's, the last thing I found was 2008, was there was a vote to.
2008, okay. So currently, the price for school lunches is $2.29.
Twenty-five.
Two twenty-nine?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five, oh, sorry. Okay, two twenty-five. And we're allowed to go up to $4.30. So the committee discussed the benefits of raising the school lunch rate to $4.30, which would allow for expanded meal choices. There was a comment made by someone in the group who has a child in the school and it was a little conversation about the quality of lunches. So this is something that would definitely enhance the culinary experience of the children. Contrary to what I had, which was peanut butter and gel. Fish chicks, I'm right, yes. Okay, so, and the cost for breakfast is $1.50 and it was suggested to raise that to $2.29. $2.28, excuse me. The committee members supported the increases and we also noted that free lunches will continue for all students with the $4.30 being charged for second lunches.
We're just talking about free lunches still.
So it's only, it's only the second lunch that would be, so the first lunch is still free? But if students, and the same thing is true for breakfast, but if students want a second lunch, that's what they'll pay instead of the first one?
So the district is covering the first lunch or is that a?
It's a state.
So, but we're giving the state our $2.00 cost instead of our $3.50 or something?
So this, so just read over the, know where these numbers came from. So these are the, the rates set by the federal government. So it aligns to the reimbursement right now. This, we had a food service audit last year. So one of the things that came out of that were these rates. We do have a very healthy food service account. One of the reasons for that is because our lunch prices were so low. We were getting reimbursed, our lunches for $2.25 were getting reimbursed at $4.30. So this is going to help, one of the things that came out of the audit, that the revenue is not matching what it should. And it's just like Bonnie said, it will open up to more choices for the, for the trays because at the same time, our food service director, John Tranfaga, is limited to only spending the $2.25 on each tray. So he couldn't spend more of the, he could only spend more if we increased the prices.
So the kids will all be getting prime rib?
And lobster.
Yeah. Okay, so then the next thing that we talked about on our agenda was update from member towns. And Dalton and Peru both, along with two other towns, share the same legal counsel. And as a result of that, they did get a letter from their legal counsel explaining about conflict of interest and each of them had to acknowledge and sign that they were willing to accept the term amendment. So that was talked about. And as far as we know, all of the towns have the regional agreement to look at. I know for a fact that Peru was hand-delivered their copies and thanks to that, they also got electronic copies. So they have that as well. I do have a motion to make, I almost forgot, on the school lunch. So we have a motion to approve those amounts that I discussed and I'll just read those. This is approval of new rates for school lunch, school breakfast and school lunches. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District approves the following increases in school lunch prices effective August 28, 2024, as recommended by the finance subcommittee.
Actually, that should be February 1st, sorry.
February 1st, yeah. Okay, you want me to reread it?
Do you mind? Or as long as everybody knows it's February 1st.
February 1st of 2024. Okay, here we go. Be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School District approves the following increases in school lunch prices effective February 1st, 2024, as recommended by the finance subcommittee. Regular student lunch from $2.25 to $4.30. Regular student breakfast from $1.50 to $2.28.
Second. Motion and second, any questions on it?
$2.28, you're going to be working in pennies?
Well, it's going to accrue though, it's a whole lot.
Well, I'm sure, but you know, I was giving my kid lunch money. I would be counting out pennies and you'd have to give change in pennies. I just didn't know if you'd want to even that out to like 30 cents or 25 cents.
It's the rate that we went with, the rate that the.
And now everybody pretty much had, their kid has an account where you just swipe it.
And I will say for the double lunches, it's about 100, 100 meals a month. So it's not every day.
Okay. I'm just trying to think of.
No, I understand where I'm going with it.
Is John doing a happy dance about how we can be a little bit more? Creative, can we come up with different answers? So we have a motion and a second.
Yes. Any other questions? None, okay. Roll call vote.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Misty Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Corrella?
Yes.
Dr. Jalinas?
Yes.
Mr. Zorin?
Yes, my kids are in the TVS, like woo-hoo.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion and carry.
And then our next meeting will be January 3rd, 2024 at 6:00 PM in person with the Dakota Learning Commons. And our topics will be an update on the regional agreement amendment and the 2025 initial budget discussion.
Thanks. Policy.
Policy. We met this past Monday, the 18th, at NESCUS. We had Liz Lefond join us for our continuing work on the policy update. We're working on section B, which, which deals with the school committee. There's a lot to go through and those will eventually come back to the school committee for discussion and approval of all those votes. Couple of the highlights, section BBA, which is the powers and duties. We, MASC, they talk about school committee establishing goals. We do the self-evaluation, but we don't have any goals. So that might be something that we want to adopt and set goals for ourselves that we can then measure our work against. The, the, the school committee member qualifications and the oath of office. There was a discussion, Leslie always does, our schools, our school committee secretary always does the oath of office. And there was a discussion about the role of the town clerks in that and what role they have as far as that. The, as well as the oath of office, a couple of things that we do need to do, which is the ethics certification, that needs to be done every two years by every member. So we should make a plan to get on that. The open meeting law certification, we all get that to meet the, the open meeting law and the past five years of determinations when we become members. But when we become re-elected, we also need to recertify. So that is, that is something else that we'll need to do. Those get submitted to the town clerks and I think we should keep a copy here as well. And relevant to tonight, the, the section on the unexpired term fulfillment is what they call it, basically a vacancy. Our regional agreement says that we fill the vacancy, but it doesn't say how. That might be something that the regional agreement committee wants to look at and put into the new regional agreement, put a method into that and spell that out as we're, as we're going through that. Charlotte will be taking over his chair. She's going to set the new, the next meetings for us. And I think we'll be continuing to work with that under Charlotte.
Next, questions we agree?
There was.
Yes, go ahead.
There was just one thing that I thought was a neat idea that came out of that meeting was that we need a handbook for new members that would include all these little bits and pieces of information so that when someone comes on, they can look through the handbook and at least some idea of what they're doing. So, and all those things that you mentioned would be in the handbook.
Yeah, that's, that was a really good thing. The other, the other discussion, when we talked about kind of roles of the different committees, there was a discussion, do we want to form a negotiation subcommittee? So personnel, person, the superintendent review is housed in personnel. And the question is, do we, and the ad hoc committee. The question is, you know, do we want to form a negotiation subcommittee for all the work that they do and just keep that kind of separate from the rest of the work that personnel does?
Subcommittee from, from personnel? Your personnel committee is very small, I mean.
It's not a subcommittee of personnel, it would be a separate subcommittee.
It's, we have, I mean, obviously we're, our structure with bylaws is set up for these certain committees. Right now, we have the ad hoc for the superintendent review.
Right.
Should fall under personnel, it's a personnel issue. We're keeping it as the ad hoc for this year, I mentioned that earlier, right? So next year, what we'll probably do is, is we're going to do a little shuttling of the deck, right? We're probably going to use that process that you developed in this, in this superintendent evaluation and roll it into the personnel subcommittee. But instead of having negotiations and the superintendent review in one because that's a lot of work, we'll break out a negotiating subcommittee that will just be for negotiating. And then the personnel will, the superintendent review will fold into the personnel. That's, that's the plan. We'll discuss that next November when we do the election and say, okay, this is how we want to do it. We'll have to change our, our setup that way.
Yeah, so that'd be, that'd be looking at the bylaws and changing, kind of working with the subcommittee charters.
Any other questions?
Just fortunately, we just finished all our contracts. So we got about two years to work this in.
Yeah, yes, yeah, yeah. That is.
Good timing.
Yes, exactly, exactly.
Okay, does that have any other? All right, next up is personnel.
We have to cancel meeting due to what? Billis. So our next, we don't have a next scheduled meeting, but our next scheduled meeting, our next meeting will be discussing, how do you, what do we call that?
Non-union.
Oh, non-margining members.
Non-margining members that, right, will be discussing compensation.
Okay. Thanks, safety and wellness. Safety and wellness, who's not here?
This is not here.
Did Liz say, Paul, did she talk to you about before now? She sent him my notes, she sent her note to me that she asked you, so maybe not.
She did, I don't have my notes with me though. Hold it tight.
Did you guys meet?
We did.
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, was there any votes or just?
We didn't.
We didn't vote on it.
No. No, we, Carrie Mason came and presented from a safety wellness perspective, the new health and wellness standards that haven't been updated since the 90s. And then we also went over just quickly, you know, illness and COVID. And then was it the bullying?
We went over the bullying.
Bullying statistics.
Statistics, right.
I don't have the exact numbers right now that we, that Leslie presented. But there was one, I think there was one finding so far this year. And then what else? I think that was about it. And then we, I don't know if we set a date for our next meeting. We talked about what could be.
We had a tentative date, but it's, it hasn't been solidified.
Yeah.
As far as I know, and we talked about some of the topics for what we would discuss at the next one, including what's for lunch.
Yes. What, what are the possibilities now for lunch?
And, and potentially around how staff and, and teachers and students are trained for emergency situations.
Yes.
What that looks like. Okay. Thanks, any questions for those guys?
Thank you for filling in on the fly. Okay. Next up is the opponent building project. Just to, to you guys know, the audit process has started and we're basically in the final phase of this whole project. So we have one more banned, receivers banned and that's it. And then we're onto the end, so that's all I got there. Regional agreement ad hoc, not much to report other than our due date is rapidly approaching for comments back from the towns. That was the 1st of January. I have heard from Covington, they wanted to meet tonight, but obviously I couldn't. We've heard from Dalton and I don't know that we've really heard from anyone else yet.
I sent you something from Bennett.
Yes.
Peru is meeting on the 26th.
Okay.
Hinsdale decided that they're going to check with their, not with the legal counsel that is shared with everybody else. They signed that agreement. They're checking with a different legal counsel, the one that represented them back when we voted for the school. So they're giving, they assured me they're going to get that done by January 1st or thereafter. Any other towns in the region?
Washington, we've discussed it with the select board, no problems.
Dalton did send a couple of questions, there were, you know.
Yeah, Dalton did send a couple questions, they were, you know, quite easy to answer. We answered those questions. I haven't seen anything else. You guys seen anything else from any other towns?
Beck just said that they have questions to the lawyers, so basically, they haven't heard back yet, but.
That's it. Okay, hopefully, we are just, you know, I mean, we're keeping the regional agreement, regional ad hoc agreement together, in case things come back and we need to have to pull the team back together again from the representative from each town, in order to address those changes and get it into the agreement. That's why we wanted to have it back by January 1st, so we have some time to roll it over, because the, obviously, the big goal is to make sure this agreement is on the, is on the ballots for each town meeting in the spring, so.
And is that optional for the towns?
I don't think so, I think.
I didn't think so, just asking.
Yeah, I think that we need, if it isn't on, if it, if it isn't on their ballots, come, I think we have to operate under our old agreement until it's validated by all the towns, so.
But all of them will be expected?
Yes, that's the hope, that they all, and of course, they've got to approve it, too, the voters got to approve it, so. I don't anticipate any issues, because it's basically the, I mean, it's just updating the language, the names of the schools, that sort of thing, and bringing it up to date with the state laws, so we don't anticipate any big problems, so, but, you never know.
Yeah.
So, any, anything else? Any other questions for God, for ourselves? Okay, then it's the superintendent evaluation, ad hoc agreement.
Okay, we met on December 13th, very, very briefly. We had already discussed and, but we hadn't made a motion. So we made the motion that the group of us, the ad hoc committee, wanted to move forward with the recommendation to approve the superintendent's goals. They were included in your packet last time and again this time, and so I have a motion that be it resolved that the Central Berkshire Regional School Committee approves the superintendent's goals.
Second. Have a motion in second, any questions?
Should we, should we add for this year?
Oh, forever.
Well, it's, it's listed on here, on herself assessment goal. Okay, no problem.
But thank you for that.
Any other question? Roqueville, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Misty Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelenaus?
Yes.
Ms. Ledozori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion carries.
And our next meeting is going to be in February sometime, where we're going to be meeting with our superintendent as part of our quarterly meetings.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, I can see some personnel changes noted in the agenda, in the old business and in the new business. I do have one item in the business, I just want to remind folks that at the end of January, we'll be having that training that we're going to have in November, that didn't, didn't happen because of a number of reasons, but we're going to try and do that MAS C training in the end of January, okay? So look for that, and that's it. Can I get a motion to a juror?
Wait.
Sorry, remarks will be with the main.
Yeah, may I just say how pleased I was at the fact that the teachers were being taught by the students in the, with the theme of No Place for Neat. I just think it was a wonderful opportunity and a great forum for student leaders to really shine and for students to teach teachers. What a great experience.
I will pass that on to Principal Rob, because that was really something he, that was really his idea.
Wonderful. I've shared it with Beck and Pete, two of the contributing editors, so we'll be offering Beck and Pete next month. There'll be more to read. I just wanted to share with the committee that I had an opportunity to meet with Senator Mark's legislative aide. I had a previously scheduled appointment to talk about some other things, but I also took this opportunity to just talk about how much we appreciate the rural aid that was awarded to the district, but if there could be any way that Senator Mark could champion for expanding how quickly we have to use that money, that would give us a little bit more flexibility. And his aide, I brought four topics, not all related to school committee, just, and he circled that one and said, this is one that we can probably take some action on, at least bringing it forward for discussion, so that was good.
Thank you. Anything? Anything else? Motion to a juror?
So move.
Roqueville, please.
Mr. Albert?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Dr. Craft Rees?
Yes.
Charlotte Crane?
Yes.
Misty Tomaso?
Yes.
Dr. Everwine?
Yes.
Mr. Emerson?
Yes.
Mr. Ferella?
Yes.
Dr. Jelenaus?
Yes.
Ms. Ledozori?
Yes.
Mr. Stewart?
Yes.
Mr. Peters?
Yes, motion in general.